Please, as best you can, try to land on one number and not halfway between two numbers.
You can't go on a line?
No. The best you can. You have five minutes to do this. Finish up in about another minute? Do you need a little more time?
We're trying.
Just about there?
Yeah, now you can start.
Okay, so what I'm gonna talk about tonight, I'm gonna do a brief overview, review of roles and responsibilities. And then, you do a little bit of thinking about how everything's working in this group, kind of review your operating protocols, and do an exercise to kind of get you to think about, are your operating protocols still right? Are there things that you want to improve upon? What might those things be as you're going forward? Okay? Okay. So, this should be a review. I think I probably asked you the same question last year. About what your most important responsibility is. I just gave you the answer.
I was just kidding.
It's supposed to be... They got backwards. So, do you remember when I said that... So, since you have the answer, it's student achievement. Do you remember how we talked about student achievement? In that it was more than just test scores? That it was really student achievement as you defined it for your students in Lunenburg? So, it was more expansive than just, you know, how are they doing academically? It was what did you want for them once they left, crossed the stage, and left you? In terms of not only academic achievement, but, you know, other skills and accomplishments that you wanted them to have. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yes. And then, thinking about, as you're thinking about that lens of, you know, what do we want for our students? That really becomes the basis of your decision making. So, when you're thinking about a decision, it's what's best for all students? And then move forward kind of from that basis. So, again, this is a bit of a review, but it always helps, I think, to have that sort of big picture review. We know from research that there are certain practices and attributes that are in place in a highly effective school committee that has that high impact on student achievement. So, some of the attributes are a vision of high expectations. So, when there are challenges, the committee looks at those as obstacles to be overcome rather than excuses for why things aren't happening. And they focus on accountability for themselves, and really for everyone in the school community to do their job and to overcome whatever obstacles or challenges there are, or focus on that accountability for student achievement. They foster strong relationships, again, amongst themselves. So, you know, the school committee and the superintendent are the governance team that needs to be able to work together effectively. But those strong relationships have to exist really throughout the entire community, because really you need the support of the entire community, not just the school community, to be able to accomplish what you want for your kids. They use data to monitor progress. Kate was talking when you were talking about school choice. You were talking about, you know, what data can we use, right? So, not just using reams of data at a very superficial level, but thinking about to accomplish what we want. What is the data for us to be looking at, digging into, and really getting into the sort of the nitty gritty of the data and understanding how that will drive decisions? Make sense? And then, lead as a united team with collaboration, trust, and respect amongst the team members. So, those are some of the attributes. Some of the practices are setting goals and monitoring progress. So, if you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there. But having goals helps you focus on, we know where we want to go. That helps drive some of your decisions as well. You've defined what you want for your students, what's important to accomplish to have that continuous improvement in student achievement. I think having those goals too helps a lot at sort of budget decision time, because the budget is the biggest resource you have to, in order to accomplish your goals. So, your budget decisions are related to how do we best use those resources to accomplish our goals. And then, monitoring progress. So, you can set a goal, put it on a shelf, and think, we set the goal. But monitoring progress to make sure that that goal actually is implemented is an important part of, a part of your work and part of what you should be making a piece of your school committee meetings. That you know, whether you put it on the agenda that you're getting a presentation related to a certain goal, or that you're keeping your, in the presentations you're getting, someone's talking about why this presentation is important to the implementation of the goals that you have for your students. Make sense? Very impurposeful meetings that are focused on student achievement. So, every meeting might not be a business meeting. If there are topics that you want to delve into, maybe have a slightly less formal discussion about, or say, you know what, we really want to concentrate our time tonight on this topic so we have a full understanding of it. Sometimes having those workshop meetings can be important when you're making rather large decisions that have a pretty big impact. Engaging in self-governance. So, really, that's some of what you're doing tonight. You're kind of stepping back and saying, are we doing the best job that we can do? Are there areas that we want to improve? Are we doing what we said we would do? Or can we do a better job? Engaging in professional development, so kind of tied into tonight too. And so, learning what it is that you need to know to be able to do your job. And sometimes, learning what's going on in the world of public policy so you know how that impacts your students. Again, a theme that always comes through when I'm talking to school committees is that strong superintendent-school committee collaboration that needs to be in place. That team needs to be able to work well together, each from their role, to be able to drive the district forward. Any questions up to this point? So, as the school committee, you are, you are the municipal legislature for schools in Lunenburg, with some key roles that are given to you through legislation. Establishing educational goals doesn't mean you create the goals. It means you work with the superintendent. You make sure there are goals established to move the district forward. You enact policies. The policy manual is the school committee's policy manual. So, you're making sure that it's up to date, that the policies are appropriate for, for the districts. Approve and monitor the budget. So, obviously, you approve the budget that is sent to town meeting for their ultimate approval. And then, again, you know, and I saw some of it tonight, monitoring the budget to make sure that the money is spent in the way that you anticipate that it's spent, and that you stay in the black. Hire and evaluate the superintendent. There are other positions, I think we talked about before, that you have consent on, advice and consent, the assistant superintendent, if you have one. Not all districts do. Don't feel lonely if you don't have one. Not all districts do.
I have a buddy for that.
Assistant superintendent, special education director, and business manager are the ones where the superintendent will run the hiring process, bring a candidate to you for your approval. And then, you're the employer of record on the collective bargaining agreements. Everybody okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So, in that superintendent-school committee relationship, thinking about the fact that each party has a role. Both have a leadership role, the school committee from a governance viewpoint, and the superintendent from a management viewpoint, managing the day-to-day operations of the schools. So, the school committee, the superintendent is going to come to the school committee with recommendations on goals, recommendation on budget, recommendations on policy. The school committee deliberates over those recommendations, makes a decision, and it goes back to the superintendent to implement the decisions that the school committee has made. So, you're thinking, the school committee is thinking of those big picture questions of what and why? How much? Why are we doing this? What are we doing and how much? What are we approving? The superintendent's thinking at a little bit, maybe more in tactical sense, how's it gonna happen? When does it happen? Where does it happen? Who does it? In implementing those decisions. Particularly at goal-setting time, the school committee is representing the vision and the values of the community at the table. Superintendent is bringing the needs of the staff to get the job done. Those two things come together as you're deliberating, particularly over goals, but as you're deliberating over decisions. So, you're authorizing and then monitoring. Superintendent is implementing, recommending, and then implementing. You both have the responsibility for promoting trust and mutual respect in that relationship. And when it's all humming along, then you have the trust of the community as well. Any questions there?
When you say community, do you just mean the school community?
No. The community as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
The community as a whole.
That's fine.
Right. Yeah. I mean, again, you need that community. You need, in the vast majority, I can't think of any district really where... Most districts have, well under 50% of the households have students actually in the schools.
Correct.
So, yeah, yeah. Generally, it's around 25%. So, when you get to town meeting, I don't know if you have an open or a representative.
We have open.
Open. So, when you get to town meeting, you really have to depend on having made the case to a lot of people other than just the parents to be able to, to get the resources that you need and accomplish what you want for the school. And you certainly, the community can also in many ways be partners in helping you accomplish what you want. You know, a parent who's gonna donate, who is a former parent.
A former parent.
Former parent, right? Perhaps businesses or other organizations in the community that are working with the schools to support, support the students in one way or another. So, really...
To encourage, right?
So, then, there's also a difference between being the committee, which only exists when there's a properly posted meeting, or being a, an individual member. So, as an individual school committee member outside of that meeting, you have no authority unless it's been specifically given to you by the committee. So, the chair, you know, has certain authority and responsibility by virtue of your selecting that person as chair. And you may have liaison responsibilities, subcommittee responsibilities, things like that. But other than that, you're another man on the street. Even though sometimes the other men on the street may not see you that way, you have no authority to make any decisions, to represent the committee prior to a decision. I mean, certainly, you're gonna feel free to talk about, you know, that this is what the committee has done, this is what the committee's considering. But you don't want to make commitments for the committee ahead of, ahead of any decision. But you are expected to come to the meetings ready to make, you know, ready to have the discussions, ready to make those critical decisions, and then support the committee decisions once they're made. Which doesn't mean if you're on the no side of something, that you automatically say, oh yeah, that's, that's great. But it means you don't get in the way of that decision being implemented. And of course, everyone has to be dedicated to the work on behalf of students. Then, as an individual, as the committee, you're governing through policy, have the fiduciary responsibility to make sure the financial resources are used appropriately, engaging the community in the work of the schools, again, sustaining that relationship with the superintendent, and again, employer of record. Any questions there? So, there's a, Tom Alsberry is a gentleman who has written quite a bit about, done a lot of research and done, written quite a bit about, you know, what makes that good school committee? Where, how do you, how do you make sure that you're fulfilling your role appropriately? And so, on one side, you could have uninformed delegation. Whatever the old man says is right. We hired the superintendent, let the superintendent go do his or her job. And not really doing the monitoring appropriately. On the other side, it could be micromanaging, right? You could be too much in the weeds of wanting to get into decisions that are really within the purview of the superintendent. So, you don't want that uninformed delegation. You don't want micromanagement. What you want to find is that sweet spot of informed oversight, where you're monitoring, you're setting appropriate goals for the district, you're monitoring what happens, and making sure that the goals are implemented and things are running appropriately. So, you kind of want to find that balance, that sweet spot, and then everybody's happy and moving forward appropriately. So, that, that's the big overview. That was, I don't, you know, I don't think you guys need to get into the weeds of everything. We just, I think we kind of did that last year.
Yeah.
So, so I want to kind of move into looking at the operating protocols.
Sure.
So, I'm gonna have, just a quick review of why you created these protocols. They're really a set of ground rules that this group decided upon. I, you know, I always hand out samples and I, after I say, I can't come in and say, here's a set of protocols, follow these, and life will be wonderful, because every team is unique and every team kind of has to decide what works for them. So, having that, you can also use that document. Part of the reason we set it is so that you've established how you're gonna work together so then you can really dig into what is the work. And you can take that document, as we'll be looking at tonight, and use it as a tool for self-evaluation. Are we doing what we said we could do? Do we, are these still appropriate? Do we need to look at them? Do we need to recommit ourselves to maybe some of those protocols that we can be doing a better job of? So, the, the protocols help you develop a better relationship. And part of what you want to do with the protocols is not just perhaps say, well, we're gonna set this new protocol because we need to do better in this area, but also think about, what do we do well? That we want to make sure we keep doing well. And make sure you articulate those in your protocols as well. They can help things run much more efficiently and help you focus your, your energy and your work again, that we've, we've, we've talked about and decided how we're gonna work together so we can really get to the work. So, I'm, I'm gonna have you look at your protocols in a minute, but first I want you to do an exercise. Get up and moving a little bit. I'm gonna have you, I think I'm gonna have Kate and Brian be a team, and then...
Carol.
Carol. I was gonna say Carol. I was afraid I was wrong. Carol, and Heather, and Jim, and Wendy. So, I want one group to go to that smart, or whiteboard. Where did we put the markers there in there? Okay. One group to go to that whiteboard and one group to go to that far one under the flag. So, I want you to notice that each of those boards has a different color marker. So, for this exercise, you need to keep the marker that you have. You'll be going around from board to board, but keep the same marker so that you're always writing in the same color that you're starting with.
We're color-coded.
You're color-coded. So, I want you guys to write "start" at the top of your board.
I'll let you do it.
I want you guys to write "stop", and I want you guys to write "continue". I'm gonna give you three minutes at each board. And I want you to think about, are there things that we are not doing? Because the start is, are there things that we're not doing now that we should start doing? Are there things we're doing now that we should stop doing? Are there things we're doing now that we should continue doing? Does that make sense? So, you're, I'm gonna, when I tell you to start, I'm gonna give you three minutes. When I have you switch to the next board, the first thing you're gonna do is read what was written before you, and if you agree with it, just put a mark or a dot or a check or something, buy it, and then add whatever more you think of.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Okay, let me...
As a committee, what we're doing?
Yes.
Not as individuals?
Yes.
A group.
Yes.
A team buddy.
Yeah. So, let me just find my clock here. Okay. Start. Oops, that didn't work. That was three seconds. Oh, I like this. I often do it on chart paper, but way more space to write.
You guys have to be the quietest.
They'll see it when I get there.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
I don't know how to say that.
So, but you mean, oh, like, uh...
Okay. Finish up whatever you're writing, if you're writing anything. Then you wanna move clockwise? Jim, put this up big enough to see.
How do you write that?
Taking, I don't know if that know where you're going.
I feel like we, we focus on this a lot when people post, and then our focus is on what they're posting, and then addressing it when they actually have it. To the proper channels, right? There are proper channels.
Yes.
For making complaints. Right?
Yes.
The proper channels for complaints. Correct?
Yes.
And if you use those, it's very appreciated. If you don't, it's annoying.
Yeah, just annoying. Just annoying.
Well, I stopped going on social media.
Okay. Yeah, you can. Come on, your time is up over there.
No, it's me. I'm done.
Once they start with nine, they're done.
I'm finished writing a couple things. Okay, you ready to start? Here we go. Here we go.
It's like a half circle.
As long as they're off the air.
Oh.
I like getting the feedback, but we don't, can't get everything. We don't know what a crisis is gonna be in crisis.
Well, right, there are times where...
We already do this. Doing what?
What's our, right, and what's our hope because at the end of the day...
We're...
The piece of our pie is never gonna significantly change.
Right.
So...
That's, yes, I agree with that.
Yep. I, I-
I don't know, but the, well, they wanna have a drive-thru anyway.
I think all of these things are a good idea because, again...
But they're good to start?
Yes.
Okay.
And if town...
Just what we wanna start doing. I think most of the stuff that we wanna do is continue by things that we're doing well.
Okay. So what I want you to do now is go back to your original board. And I'm gonna ask you to do one minute. Just go through and look at anything that's added since you did your original thing.
So you can put a dot by anything that's new.
So wait, 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 wait. Do we agree with this?
That's all there is. Nobody would agree with that. Things have been added since you started, right? So if there's anything that's added that you would re-watch, put a dot by it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Maybe they don't know what I mean. I find that hard to read.
Maybe they thought that wasn't outside.
Yeah, but we've never done it.
Okay. So, starting with "start", I'm gonna have you, like, read through your list so everybody can kind of hear what's on all the lists and have a more of a chance to absorb it and discuss it a little bit.
Okay.
So.
Play it with you, Kim. No one wants to start that? There's an attempt next to the question. We don't wanna do that? You don't wanna do it?
I totally didn't know the dots until after.
Oh.
Totally. I said, "I do, I do dot them."
That's, I thought you wanted it. That's why I wrote it. Like, you really brought it up today?
Yes.
I'm like, "Where's that red dot?"
I thought you were plugging the social media.
No, that's not mine. That's red. See, I'm red. Use some social media for communication by administration, not by school committee. You want us to have a school committee social media thing? That's red. That's you guys, right? So do you want-
I don't know that it, um, I think that there's a way that we can maybe convey more information. Like, when we have discussions, you might say, instead of make sure that's on the website?
Right.
Make sure that's communicated through social media.
Oh, okay.
All right.
That works.
That works. This is Carol.
I put down, identify issues ahead of the crisis and have time to gather community at large staff, students, and parent opinions. I mean, it doesn't, you're not always able to.
That's what we were saying.
But sometimes, sometimes you know you wanna go down a certain road and you know there's gonna be trouble. And if we identify those things ahead of time and have time to gather that information, that's why I put that there.
So can you define crisis a little bit more?
Well, my, my, crisis perhaps was a bad choice of words, but I didn't know what, how else to put it. I, sometimes things come up that become a crisis, like changing our extended day policy at the last minute, and it was a crisis, and we had to do it quick, and it turned out into a problem. If we had foreseen that, there would have been less stress on everybody's part, community people specifically, parents specifically. But things like if you wanted to make a curriculum change, suppose it was a curriculum change that you had in mind, and you knew some people weren't gonna like it because maybe you wanna start something, and in order to do it, since we never have any money, you're going to have to close something to start something. Well, you may wanna go ahead of time and talk more about that and gather, see if we can gather ideas and support. So that's what I meant by this.
Okay.
And the meeting with town officials to plan funding, my thought was that in this town, we've been able to plan adding a firefighter one a year, adding a police officer one a year, but we haven't been able to plan adding to our school, like a curriculum director. There's no way to do that because we're always trying to tread water. So we need to talk to other town officials to figure out how in the world we can do that. So that was my, that was my thought.
And the planning board is key because we need to know the impact of properties and development on our student-
Numbers.
Numbers. We don't have any idea.
I know, last week's, um, select board meeting, they were talking about this, having this kind of a meeting with school people.
Well, and I responded to an email about that for us because I asked at the last meeting. So it sounds like it might be an October thing, right? Yeah.
October 12th.
Did they throw out a date? It might be a Thursday. It sounded like it might be a Thursday.
Yeah, a lot of it is a Thursday.
I think it was around eight. It was around, I thought it was.
I don't know. I didn't send it to me yet, so I have no ideas.
So, but, but the idea is that a little bit more communication between across the townwide so that you can make the case for the goals essentially that you have or the resources you need to implement the goals that you have.
Right.
Yeah.
And get support from other town governmental, yeah.
Yep. Well, it's a good thing that the start list wasn't the longest list. I think that's a good thing. Wanna go ahead with the "stop" list?
So one of the things that we thought we should stop doing is focusing on things that are not student-need-based. We have, you know, outside influences trying to drive our discussions, and we need to focus on the students and their needs. I am guilty of this myself, sometimes interrupting others. I wanna stop doing that. I've tried to make a very conscious effort, and I have apologized in the past for doing so. Stop making individual declarations. Earlier I mentioned, you know, my child. I probably should not be doing that. But there's also, that pulls into this comment in social media is individuals. We have one voice for the school committee, and that's the chair. Stop doing public debate during public comment.
Right.
It's public comment, period. We're not debating.
So can I just, I-
And we're not consistent in how, in finding that.
I'm a little bit surprised, actually, that during a public comment, the school committee member made a comment. I've never seen that before. Usually, public comment is reserved for the public to the board, not board members to each other.
Oh, okay.
Oh, but you, okay, yeah.
Because I think we base that kind of on public comment from the public and the public comment from members of the board.
Yeah, I feel like the board is selective.
The day set as well. Yeah. Is it a town thing?
Yeah.
Not necessarily saying it's a good thing or it works.
Right.
But, but, agreed, and sometimes, you know-
It is unusual.
For us, I think there's an expectation from the public that if they have public comment, that we have an answer, a comment, "We'll fix it. We'll, we'll do what you want, whatever it is." And it's a fight not to, not to give any of that. And it's, and I think, you know, sometimes we're struggling with how to manage that relationship in that dialogue.
And it's, you know, you're not wrong. But I think, you know, if you can sort of set that parameter and be consistent about it, that would help. Sometimes, school committees put, you know, you have your printed agenda, and on the back of the agenda or right on the agenda, they put the guidelines for public comment so that the, the community knows what to expect. You have to be sure you're very consistent. And I think sometimes it helps to say to the community, you know, we get a packet so that we're prepared to have discussions at the board meeting. So we, you know, we get a packet ahead of time, so we're, as board members, prepared to have that discussion. If the member of the public brings up a new topic, we just wanna make sure we're prepared to discuss it and not talking about it off the cuff. And I, you know, sometimes I think that helps the public understand it's not that you're disregarding what they say, it's that you're just not that night ready to talk about it. Or it may be something, I mean, I think you were very good saying, essentially, people can talk about things that are within the purview of the school committee.
Yes.
Right? So they can't come in and talk about things that belong at the building level or at the superintendent level or someplace else. And I think that that's a helpful differentiation to make sometimes, too.
We had last year, Mel, we did.
Yep.
We still have that, right?
Yeah, and I didn't know, I'm wondering if on our agendas is a more, I don't know if it's better, like, posted like that.
Exactly, the website is. On your school.
You're operating?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all on the, it's all on the website, but again, it's not present at the meeting when rather than the meeting.
Well, you can be paying it in the room.
We do, yeah, yes.
It's rather lengthy.
It's really long.
Right, so the agenda would be several pages every story.
So, but no, I'm not talking about your operating protocols.
Separate.
Just public comment.
So you, yes, so you have a policy, I'm sure, on public comment, right? And then you probably have guidelines for public comment, how many minutes, the, you know, how many minutes each person can speak, that is. So, and those are, I wouldn't, it's, in your operating protocols, it's kind of buried, among other things. I'm talking about just the portion that refers to public comment. Does that make sense?
Public comment in a state of each meeting.
Yep. And on the agenda, it's listed the first public comment. It's agenda items, and the second one says open. Yep. Yep. But it doesn't say limited to three minutes. The school committee will not push on.
The chair usually articulates that.
Yep.
If there's a lot of public, like today, no.
But like, at the other ones, yes. I usually say it's three, it's 10 minutes, 10 minutes per speaker at cap. Yeah.
Okay. I've just, I've seen committees do that, and I think sometimes it helps. Right. They're usually- Okay, I interrupted. Go ahead.
And then, Black wrote down addressing issues based on social media as opposed to the proper channels for complaints. We did agree with that. Again, we were focused on what the committee's doing, not individuals. So, that's what we wanted to stop doing.
I did bring, I'll leave our social media for school committee members a little, some guidelines. That's awesome. That might be helpful.
Because I've probably run afoul of that myself. What's your thoughts?
Well, that was a big thing, too, whether it was information versus opinion when you're addressing on social media.
Yeah, yeah, you definitely, I mean, putting your opinion on social media can get you a whole opinion module. I'm sure you're aware of that. Even, even this is an opinion.
Yep.
So, so be aware of that. And also, you know, you don't wanna run your district based on what's trending on social media, right? You wanna be a little bit more balanced.
Crisis trending on social media, and that, you know what I mean? I think the only thing we're looking at, how do we keep focus on student need and not?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think, you know, social media definitely has positives along with some negatives, right? One of the negatives, I think, is that social media can sound like shouting when it's really whispering because it's really a small number of very active people as opposed to a large number of people.
Correct.
Okay, so you got through your whole "stop" list, right?
Mm-hmm.
Continue, which I like that that's the longest list.
So putting students first, everybody agreed with that. Using data, and then add, Black added where appropriate. We agreed with that, too. That was great. Implementing operating protocols that were developed, everybody agreed. Listening to all stakeholders, and then also Black added, including community members with no students. And we agreed with that. We thought that was great since we were just talking about how a majority of the community doesn't have students. Have staff and students present and showcase. As long as students come prepared with a presentation, that's always important. And then tie in relevance to the goals. Having liaisons with community government, continue having those liaisons. Continue to have open dialogue, discussion, deliberations with the school committee. Everybody agreed. Blue also added being prepared to ask questions before and during meetings. Everybody agreed. Blue also added balancing meeting content. And Black added asking questions to monitor progress, budget, and bring forward concerns of all stakeholders.
So I have a question.
Um, one of the things that we're, I think, that we agreed with is where to go. Open dialogue, where to go? It was, oh, having liaisons with community and government, yet you were gonna start having-
No, that's a workshop meeting.
Oh, 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 that's not, that's one meeting to talk about. Got it, got it.
We do have liaisons, like Carol is the liaison, liaison for FinCom. I will be the new liaison for KTO. We have liaisons for all the student, the school advisory councils.
So you're talking about more like a budget summit?
A budget summit, yes.
And there, we need to not budget.
And symposium kind of thing, yeah.
Yep, okay.
So that everybody knows where everybody's thinking and where their budget is going and what budget, you know, all of us know, have a big picture idea and not just our little world.
Got it. Yeah. Okay. Okay.
I think it's also continuing to look for opportunities, too, in the community gap and all the liaison spots. If there's organizations.
Okay. Come back to the table? So just, thank you. If you wanna pull out the governance review, you do. So on number, on operating protocols, where did people land?
Three.
Three.
Three, four.
I put four.
Okay, so threes and fours. For the three, what was the rationale for three rather than four?
Well, we haven't repeated yet. We just moved it last year.
Okay.
Should've come up for review right about now, and we haven't done that.
Okay, so at that, I mean, they ended tonight, it'll be in four?
My three was that, because we haven't periodically come together and talked about how we're working and making adjustments.
Correct. We just did, and that was, we haven't actually evaluated the.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Okay, so after tonight, you move this board?
Yes.
I guess I, I felt that, I said four because I didn't like three saying not all members follow them. That kind of pushed me away from three.
Right. Okay.
I was questioning that as well, but I also thought.
But you didn't.
And I told you.
I answered somewhere, right?
Yeah, right, I could go on the line. I could go on the line. It was a trade-out.
I took a lot of them. We're on the line.
Yeah.
I think we all agree on that.
What about goals?
I did four.
I did four.
Excellent, excellent.
I do.
Excellent, and I think that's kind of reflected in some of the things that you have up there, using data as appropriate, tying things to goals, I think that came through. What about meetings?
I said two, I said three.
I said three.
I said two.
I said two.
Wendy.
Really, I circled four, but it was between three and a four. I guess I was looking at the difference that I was in terms of, you know, the beginning, you know, presentation related to district improvement, I feel like our, our meeting agendas and how, what we're talking about and how we're talking about them has come a long way. Some of it, I'm going through personally, through the lens of where we've come over four years.
Oh, you're right.
The last 12 months, in terms of sort of organization, clear vision, clear path, you know, where we are, where we want to go, how we get, all those pieces of the puzzle have become so clear. So, so some of that for me was just, you know, you know, again, looking at workshops, so there were just pieces of four, but I also can see, you know, pieces of two and three in there, too.
So what, so two is, is lower than some of the other things, so for people that have two, what was your rationale there?
Jam.
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 So, mind, it was more around the fact that we don't always talk about student outcomes in terms of our agenda, and we don't focus the agenda always on the outcomes. If we look at the calendar and what's, what's coming up in the calendar, it's not always focused on student outcomes. And, and I know we have had some stumbles where either the community hasn't been involved early enough, or they've been involved too late, or nobody was paying attention, or whatever, but we don't always need to have community input to make decisions either. So I was stuck, I was, and while I see that we're moving in that, in the right direction, even in the two years that I've been on the board, just the last, first 12 months and the second 12 months are almost not in date in terms of direction and how we're progressing, there's some room for improvement. I'm usually very self-critical when it comes to doing my own evaluations at work, so I probably look at this as a.
Well, I mean, I mean, this is, I mean, this is obviously too, not to, like, whip you, right? Whip you into shape, it's more to think about what can you do better.
Right.
Like, and, you know, some of the things that you pointed out when you were, when we were doing a stock, there are things you can improve and do better on, right?
And Kate, you said you had to do as well.
Yeah, that was exactly the reason that I chose to, it was, it was more about not, we don't focus enough on.
On the student.
Sometimes it feels like there's just been so many other forces pulling at it.
Pulling, so many.
It's usually business.
All that you're bringing us in terms of vision and clarity, how to get there, I feel like we haven't had, we haven't been able to put.
To move forward in that.
Yes. Although one thing you do well in force is, is advisory committees and, you know, looking, looking at athletics when there were some, some issues of concern, you know, that advisory came along, like, so, so we are responsive in some ways around, you know, looking at ways to explore things.
So it's more sort of upping your game in terms of a little, it sounds like a little bit planning, and I think it goes along to what you had down for start in terms of identifying issues or, you know, thinking about planning ahead, right? Some of that is just planning ahead, so that you, and staying focused on, staying focused on, you set goals, right, to give yourself some focus, there's other things that go on, but to, to keep the focus and so that the other ideas or things that might come up, is this the time and the place to be talking about them, or do we need to focus more on our goals?
We've had, in the last few years, we've had some big sort of things that we've allowed to detour us.
Yes.
And for too long of a period of time.
So does that mean that you're letting decisions drag on rather than making decisions moving ahead?
Sometimes I don't like we turn it to another meeting, to do more research based on community coming after the fact of another decision.
And then there's an adjustment to the decision, which then creates a new pocket of concern for other persons in town that were.
Group.
Unaffected.
Yeah, they were unaffected.
It's actually, it just seems like a domino.
Yeah.
And we've had it in a multitude of places, you know, in buildings, in athletics, in, in after-school, things that are, that are related to before and after-school. So, so the six hours living, you know, in the buildings and educating our kids sometimes, that's almost, fallen, by the way, that is not the correct word, but it's just what came to mind, it's like, it's been harder to be in that place when there's been auxiliary.
Superintendent to be in that place.
Yes.
She's doing other stuff then, instead of focusing her attention on the stuff that she really wants to do, she's been doing a little bit of cleanup work this year.
Needs to do, yeah. So is, but, you know, so, so that's my, is some of that cleanup and catch-up that will be taken care of and will become less of an issue moving forward?
So this is what I would say. I actually taught a course for administrators on the change process, and one of the elements that was incorporated in that course was a video clip of then CEO Hewitt Packard, call me the arena, and she was addressing an assembly of some type, I don't know exactly what, but she made the statement that there's a difference between leadership and management. Leadership is dangerous, she said, because leaders seek to change the order of things, and change is hard for people. It's, you know, been framed that oftentimes a change means a loss of something familiar, and it's actually a grieving process, and oftentimes people are upset by the change. But there are, there are times when the change is really necessary if the focus is on what's best for, for kids, safety-wise, curriculum-wise, socially, emotionally, behaviorally, right through a multitude of lenses. So I think I maybe need to be sure that the board is still in agreement that you're, you're still looking for some instructional leadership versus trying to manage and kind of keep status quo.
Well, that's the one, you were the, you were the winning candidate, chosen candidate because of the vision of the leadership that you were going to bring, and throughout your, again, throughout the year that you've been gathering information and working towards making some of those leadership changes.
Right.
I had felt totally reformed to be able to make those decisions to support where I felt was necessary to support, and I questioned where I felt necessary to question.
Right, and, and I actually appreciate that. I think, you know, the last four-ish months, there's been a lot of feedback from parents, really, and I've heard that feedback, and I make adjustments as quickly as I can. So as an example, it was a concern that information wasn't put ahead of the meeting so parents could process the recommendations that were coming around extended day. Valid, valid. But immediately then, when we made proposed changes for the expansion of middle school athletics, as an example, I got that information out as quickly as I had it. Now, that's also a challenge that we have, right? In the district, this is no secret, folks are really, in many cases, juggling many, many things, and are, in some cases, overloaded. I get the information that I need from key people as soon as I can get it, and then I give it to all of you, I get it out to the parents as well. But it's not that I have been sitting on information and not sharing it with you or with the public. I put it out as soon as I can get it together from a variety of sources sometimes, I mean, information from different people. As an example, the middle school athletics, really, I was looking largely for information and recommendations from the athletic director, and also, you know, consultation with our finance, our business manager, right? I think that the one concern I have about the request for information to be out well in advance and for good periods of time for things to be considered, that really can slow us down. Sometimes things are timely and a decision needs to be made, and that's, you know, not necessarily to exclude input from stakeholders, but sometimes we have the data internally, and I can make an assessment based on the data that I do have. I mean, I can appreciate that the parents want to have input on lots of things, but sometimes that input is, is going to be providing me information with what they would like or need that I know, based on what's currently happening, I cannot accommodate or deliver. So I sort of feel like it's, it's disingenuous if I put out a survey, ask people for what they want or need or would like, when in fact I, I know I can't even deliver what's currently being offered with the lens on what's best for students, right? So, you know, it's a challenge, but I mean, I think I've heard what folks would like to see more of, and I can certainly work in that direction to get information out for folks to consider.
And knowing, too, that, that there is not curriculum, you know, programs, there's not everything to suit everyone.
Right.
And societally, I think we've gotten to a place where people feel like, you know, because things happen so quickly, and we can individualize so much, that somehow everything should be suited to every person, and just doesn't happen.
And I think, too, you know, with the budget, you know, we received input from the community around maintaining a program, but I think, you can advise me, I think that we need to be clear on what our priorities are. Is it more important to offer a wide variety of things that potentially impact a small number of students versus, let's say, letting class size of, you know, the first grade be 27-plus, right? Like, is the greater priority to, you know, ensure as best we can, a really solid start for our youngest learners, because that's the foundation that they carry all the way I, I don't, no educator wants to be taking things away from kids, right? That's, that's not what you want to be doing, but when you have to make tough decisions, right? You know, what's the greatest impact in a positive way that, that's something that should have a higher priority?
Well, and that's.
It's a challenge, but I think that we, we need to be clear on what are our priorities.
Well, and that's why you have a good discussion on your goals and your priorities, and use data. All that data may not be internally generated data, right? There may, I mean, there's certainly data on the best class size, or, you know, for the best outcomes for elementary grades, or, you know, so, I think, when, when you, when you're making those decisions about goals and priorities and, you know, the limited resources you have for the budget, that, you know, that, that the decisions are made based on the data, again, not just internal Moon River data, but the bigger wealth of data about what works for kids, right, and what's the best educational path.
And that's what I was going to say, is that's the data that you present to us to allow us to evaluate.
The recommendation.
What is the best decision for the kids of Moon River?
Right.
And without, and so we depend upon you to provide that information, and we have, and if we have enough time, we can do our own research, and Carol did a great job getting, gathering a bunch of information last year, that I found extremely helpful in informing my, most of my decisions. But it's that, the thing we depend upon you for, specifically in that instance where we had to make that, we're kind of forced to make a choice between keeping one day or increasing class sizes.
And they are never easy choices to make.
No, and I think every one of us who cast a vote had to agonize a little bit over having to make that vote, none of us liked it.
And I feel like.
To bring it to you.
You can just communicate that to the community and also give them the opportunity so they have their voice and they can, they can express their opinions and their concerns, too.
So there's a quote that we, and I'm not going to get it quite right, but it's your industry owes you, or your representative owes you, not his industry only, but his judgment. And he, he does something that's not good to you rather than serve you if he cedes it to your opinion, right? So I forget that, that middle part, but basically it's saying that you, you have the responsibility for making the judgments, for really studying the data, for really coming and making, making the judgments that you feel are in the best interest of students, rather than just always saying, well, the community wants this, so this is what we're going to do. And then in the long run, you're better serving students, and the community will see that students are being better served. So, so that was, I have a feeling monitoring is going to.
Hold on, three, monitoring.
Monitoring.
I couldn't either.
You couldn't? Okay, because that's the one.
I had a three, but that was the last minute. All right, finish it up.
I just handed the data.
I said two, because I know that we have done, done a great job of getting the data, and we see the data. I don't think that we've had the opportunity yet to delve into the data and how we can make those adjustments specific to Moon River students. And I know that, that, based on the last report that we got from the superintendent, clearly outlined, these are, these are the data points that we're looking at, we know we're different here, we're different here, we need to get into why that is. And it's the story behind the numbers that we're waiting for.
So one of the, one of the challenges around academic data points, the district is lacking in well-designed, internal, common assessments, right?
Yes.
That takes some professional development to learn how to approach that well, right? We do have some assessments that we use, particularly at the primary and elementary, we have the Ames Web and DRAs that we do to assess where our students are in terms of reading, but how effectively are we utilizing the data? Again, there needs to be some professional development, and to that end, I have leadership all of next week. We have spent, this will be the second full week that we have spent together this summer, and one of the days.
And one of the days, I have somebody coming in to do a data workshop to make sure that everybody understands what's available to them and how to sort of sift through all of the data that the state can provide us now and, you know, finally, they know what to be looking for. But we also are in need of a solid RTI model where you've got tiered supports, right? There's a lot of work that needs to be done around curriculum, assessment, instruction. And it's a challenge. The district has done the best it can for the last seven years without the curriculum director.
Is there a common planning time within departments, say, at the high school level?
We do have some common planning time. The challenge is how we utilize that, right? Do we have data that we can look at? In many cases, we don't, short of MCAS data, in terms of academic data points.
Especially at a higher level.
Sure, yeah.
For final exams, midterm exams.
And they are common. And it's too late, right? That's an endpoint check, right? You're not getting data throughout in a way that's common so a department could come together and say, "Okay, so on this assessment that we did..."
I wonder if that's a starting point, though? You can start with final exams and get to unit exams down the road.
It's, it's a process.
It is.
And it really does come down to the quality of, of the assessment that's developed. If it's not standards aligned, what's the data telling you about the curriculum and the knowledge that the kids are supposed to be getting, right? So there, when I say this, there's a lot of work for us to do. There's a lot of work.
Giving the teachers time to work on that.
Yeah.
And then also another potential idea too, curriculum days, but that would be something that you'd have to potentially budget for subs where the teachers would all gather and have a curriculum day to review that, implement that.
Right. And I would say that, you know, being teachers-
For negotiating.
Teachers, teachers resent often when professional development days are for them to go do work on curriculum. They want professional development, right? Not go work on your curriculum.
Right.
Right? So this year coming, you know, we formed the professional development committee last year and the two full days are going to be structured as a conference model. We've got speakers who are presenters who are coming in at no cost, no fee to us. And we'll be able to create an online registration so that teachers will be able to choose the sessions that they want to attend throughout the day. It gives them choice, it makes things a little bit more meaningful for them because they're, they're seeking, you know, things that are interesting. And that's really important. For me, it was always most important that teachers walked away from a day like that, a professional development day, feeling re-energized and excited about something that they learned that they can't wait to try in their classroom. When I hear that as they're heading out the door for the day, that's when I know we've done a good job. That's how they should feel at the end of one of those days, you know? So we're going to have two days in the fall, one in September, one in November. The professional development committee actually will probably have some good input into the calendar development for the following year.
Oh, good.
They would actually like to have the full days spread out so we have one in the fall and one in the spring so we can have more time to solicit and develop.
Who comes?
Who comes? And how, you know, have more time. Right now, we've been working through the summer crunching to get everything in place for the September day. And as soon as that's done, we're going to have to turn right around and start crunching to get everything ready for the November day.
And I remember that was part of the plan was always that they would have professional development days early so they could implement professional development throughout the school year.
I remember what we shipped today, yeah.
And I think, I think there are times, it depends on what you're working on.
I know, but that was what we were told when we shifted it to, because there used to be one in the spring and one in the fall. And then it was shifted.
As an example, when the new educator evaluation system came in, it totally makes sense that you would front-load the PD days so that teachers could have time to get familiar with the work on it.
And I wanted to push that end of it too, of goals about common, common unit assessments, common final exams as a goal, and they can work on that.
To leadership next week, we're going to have some conversation around team goals. I encouraged them last year to try to work in that direction because when you have multiple people working on the same goal, you increase the potential for greater impacts, right? And principal in the building knows about a handful of goals that they can really keep in their sights and help staff work to attain. But we're also going to talk about a potential for a team goal for the leadership team. Is there something that we all want to work on together? And I don't, we haven't had that conversation, so I don't, I don't know what that will produce, but there's good conversation going to happen next week.
So in terms of the school committee monitoring, do you use sort of a year-long agenda to, you know, for-
For the, there are certain things slotted in the meeting throughout the year.
Right, yeah. So, so you're using that for the presentations that will support the monitoring of the goals?
I think it's more of a skeleton or, you know, so that things don't drop off the radar.
Right.
Timely and they're not, oops, we forgot about that, we really shouldn't have addressed that a month ago.
I feel like it potentially could be more consistent to like, say, have staff or students present, showcase. That was just one I haven't, I remember, seeing in the spring, but I didn't see it. And I think it's tough in the summer, but-
A lot of, a lot of committees use a year-long agenda for sort of the administrative things.
That's what it is.
But if you think about the fact that if you have a plan for the year of implementing your goals and you can think about what are appropriate times to keep the school committee updated on the goals, then you can plug that into the year-long agenda as well. And that keeps you guys focused on what the work is that you need to-
He is, yeah. So this is this year, just so you can have a look.
So sometimes, sometimes what I see is not necessarily, well, it's sort of on the year-long agenda too. If you have like key actions and benchmarks for some of the goals that are happening throughout the year, well, when's the appropriate time to update the committee and give a presentation on that? And then even on the agenda, you put what goal it relates to so that the school, so that in your head, you know, you're building up this knowledge base about how the goals are being implemented.
One way that Superintendent Burnham really brought that home is our entire budget. Everything that was a change or addition was highlighted as to what goal, what specific goal it's supported. And that, that's a change for all of the districts.
Yep, that's a really nice way to, to keep you focused. It makes budget decisions easier in a way, right?
Incredibly. And that was, that was the, that was great.
And that dialogue started in December and carried right through here.
Honestly, until April, it was five months.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, it did make with the tight budget.
And it was so long.
I, you know, when we talked to new school committee members, you know, that are charting the course, I usually say, you know, "You thought there were four seasons in a year, right? There's five."
Well, she just-
Spring, fall.
Dr. Burnham did that as well in her, when we met with her individually for her evaluation. She documented everything as it related to her goals and had provided us with evidence as how she fulfilled her goals.
Yep, yep.
And we not, we had not had that.
No. And even in our evaluation, if I had a question about something, if there was, then I would get back how that related or supported a skill or goal. So it was, so it was easier to see if it was achieved.
Okay.
Yeah. So I want to quickly go to community engagement. I have my eye on the clock here. We could probably spend the whole night, but we don't want to do that. So let's quickly do community engagement and then get to the operating protocols. What do people have?
Two.
Two.
Two. Okay.
You're old enough.
There are elements of three in there, but-
Yes, there are.
It's primarily two.
But can I tell you, you're not alone.
Usually that kind of gets the lowest. It's hard.
And clearly difficult when we had many opportunities, public forums, where Kate would be there and Heather and I.
Yeah.
Or somebody else, you know, some, I mean, we would know parents, know community members, maybe one person would come by.
Yeah.
Not even when I took it to the Eagle House.
Well, we had like two ladies there.
Well, they, they kind of felt bad that there was- I think, I think they were just there already.
So they agreed to come on over.
And Kate had about 16 forums with minimal attendance. They're minimal. And I, and there were times where she had the principal people so that the community that would be, she would be serving could meet and question them. And the community did not come to meet and question them. Carolyn and I did.
What was the one you went on alone at? Down hall?
I don't even remember that one. There were, oh, that was a principal or AD. The AD one was the most attended one that I, I sat in. And I think there were what, three?
And there were three.
Well, you know, there was a handful of people there. And then at Mr. McGrath's, there was less. That was the high school principal. And less than, were we at that one? Less than seven people attended that. And some of them, some of them were staff members that just were supporting him as a candidate.
Yep.
Or, yes. And even with the athletic director, some of them were just supporting the, the person.
Basically both of them were interim.
Interim. And they were supporting the decision to make them permanent.
Permanent, yep.
So how do people gain more attendance and such things?
Some of it is figuring out, some of it, I mean, we have a whole, a whole meeting on community engagement, but some of it is, it is challenging. Some of it is figuring out how to get, so I think in some ways you're a step ahead of the game because you're saying, "We want to engage the community and get their opinion. It's not all about public relations and we want to push stuff out."
Right.
So sometimes people, the community engagement, "Oh, we want to be able to tell our story." But they're not talking about wanting to get the feedback, right? I think some of it is figuring out ways to get information out in a way that's a, I never forget, that's like a push-out instead of a, you don't have to go looking for it. It's, it lands where you're going to find it.
21st century communities.
Yeah, yeah.
The base doesn't work anymore.
They rewrite 120 characters.
Exactly.
Right? Don't you have 240 now? And that's what we're talking about, again, as part of the leadership work and part of that strategy for continuous improvement that comes out of the entry process. We, we have to, people are expecting, because this is how they get information in every other facet of, of the world now, right? They want quick little bits of information right to my hand.
So you send it to us?
But I, yeah, well, I don't push out like a text.
I tweet it.
That's what I'm talking about.
Technology.
We've looked into and there are some apps that you can use where you can enter a brief little message and select multiple social media outlets for that message to go to. So there are lots of people in town that use Facebook, but there are others who use Twitter and Hank, the therapy doctor, Instagram.
Reminds.
Right? So I don't think we'll be able to get every single social media outlet, but we'll be able to push more information out, brief little bits of information out where they live, whether that's Twitter or Facebook, Instagram. It's going to take us a little bit of time to kind of pull all that together.
And you Snapchat too?
Ah.
That's what the kids use.
They do. Yeah, we could, we could look into it.
Yeah, just for the kids' stuff.
And we need to be cautious too and be mindful of IT and the recommendations, right?
Yeah, whatever.
So it's going to be a, a process, but it's going to be an element of a communication plan. We're deliberate in trying to figure out ways to get information out.
Right. And also very little space to sometimes convey a complex-
That's correct, yes, yes.
Can you use links sometimes?
Well, you have to, you have to.
Yep, to make-
And I assume that people will click on links. It's like soundbites.
Right.
He's got a 30-second soundbite as a presidential candidate to explain a policy position to 200 pages.
Right.
You can't do it.
And one of the things that we also need to talk about, you run the risk of, I know this sounds ridiculous because you can never have enough communication, but you can actually. If you over-utilize a method of pushing information out, people start to tune out.
Tune out, yeah.
So we need to be selective about what kinds of information do we push out through the robo-call or the push email to everyone versus what information do we share? The district has a YouTube channel, right? So what, what guidelines need to be in place for what's appropriate to put there? Because you're putting oftentimes video that involves students, right? So there's, there's a lot of big conversation that needs to happen. We have ideas of what we want to do, but we also have to be mindful of what parameters do we need to consider for safety and confidentiality. But it's, it's going to be a, I think, a priority focus for the work that we do this year. I mean, one of the things that I had considered and I think mentioned to some of you, so much conversation around the budget occurred through Facebook. Maybe we need to consider putting budget documents and information on a Facebook page that is the school department, right? And people can comment and we would have an opportunity to see that comment and maybe make some adjustments or, or maybe not, but it's, it's that opportunity to get some feedback. You know, we have to have norms, I guess, around what's appropriate and what's not.
You have to publish the comments because you can get the comments without having them public, right? Can't you do that on a Facebook page?
Oh, I don't know.
You can, you can create.
It comes down to how you create the rage because, you know, you certainly don't want to have inappropriate or-
But I think that if you lay out the parameters, right, and, and it's clearly stated that there's somebody who's going to monitor and if comments are out of bounds-
And who would do that though? That's okay.
There are monitors of the other Facebook, a lot of schools, Facebook.
Can I not get a spot down on-
Yeah, let's get out of here.
On a Facebook page?
Just so that we can have a chance.
Yeah, let's go on. Let's try to close out as close to nine as we can. So what I'd like to have you, thinking about all this discussion that we've had all evening, right? What I did was outline for each of your headings, right? I want you to think about, if you're looking, if you're reading the bullets under the headlines, do you all agree on what the different bullets mean, right? And the rationale for having them? Do you follow them? It sounds like you do. And, you know, some that, that everybody agreed with continuing to follow the protocols. And you know, that everybody agreed with continuing to follow the protocols, right? If you don't, is there, is there something that needs to change? Do you need to change your behavior or does the protocol need to change? And then are there any additions or deletions that need to be made? So if we can like quickly read through each section and just have a little bit of discussion about any changes that people might want to make or, or comments that they might want to make about following or how can we be better? Does that make sense? Brian was puzzled.
Yeah.
Okay. So I just, I just have a first slide for each, you know, that's who we represent and what.
Oh, okay.
So let's start with, yeah.
I would propose that we say, place our educational safety in development and interests. Let's include safety in that because it has seemed to have been a driving factor in many of our decisions.
Yes, I agree. Place our educational.
Safety and development.
Safety and developmental needs and interest of the law owners.
Any other comments on that one? Limits of authority. I'm going to quickly read through that.
I've seen pictures.
No, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, right.
So I just wanted to follow the chain of command directly to do the same. Is that really the same? Are four and six saying the same thing?
No, because the chain of command could be a building level and not go to the superintendent. It could just go to a principal. Or, like when people ask you what we should do, most of the time it should start at the.
The teacher. I know the, I know the chain of command.
So that's what we're talking about there.
Okay.
Because a lot of people just overstep that.
Oh, yeah.
On six, sometimes we get notified, hey, member of the school committee, such and such is happening, and then we refer that back to the superintendent.
Gotcha, okay.
So they're a little bit different.
We've got it. How we treat each other. I couldn't get it. Couldn't get it all on the page. I think you can see, yeah, I think you can see what it says.
Jim's wheels are charred.
Yeah, my wheels are charred. Now, the only thing that I'm thinking we might want to kind of clarify in terms of how we communicate is just to make sure that, and I don't know if we have it anywhere else, that when we're communicating the email, it's not deliberating.
Correct.
That we are, we're probably, we agree at all about the meeting law requirements of, of that kind of communication. I'm not sure, and I think it fits in this section. Because like in number one, it says that school committees have questions or concerns, you have the superintendent.
Only. It should only matter.
Well, in advance of the meeting, right.
Well, that was, that was, I think the intent of that statement is different.
Will be no surprise, like you're holding back here, questions or concerns.
Oh, yeah.
It's like, ah, well, see, on this date you said this.
Yeah.
An awful lot of conversation that became part of the discussion and highlight. I don't think that's what it meant. I'm wondering if Jim, it could go in one or two year.
All right, so we're in between.
Is school committee members have questions or concerns? Do you agree?
No, two is different than.
Yeah, no, do you agree to first contact the superintendent?
So I would.
We'd agree to abide by.
This school committee agrees to abide by the open meeting law.
Open meeting law. And direct all communications to the superintendent.
And chair.
And chair. That's it.
Alone, yes.
Alone, that's it. Not each other.
And not deliberating.
So is that a separate?
We don't need, we don't need that we agree there will be no surprises. That's kind of, that's all.
I, so I don't know if that we need to make that as a, as a second line.
Is that a one?
Yeah, but another line under the how we communicate. I, I.
I think so.
I think having it very clear that we all have agreed that.
So maybe that becomes two.
Right.
And we just press those numbers.
Yeah.
Did you hear what we said?
Mm-hmm. So just, you know, I was just thinking back to some of your stop items there.
Yeah.
And it sounded like maybe you needed to concentrate a little bit more on five. Five, five, recognize the chair and his or her as the official voice. I mean, it sounded like some of your comments, you know, commenting on social media, addressing issues. I, I could be wrong in interpreting, but I thought some of that was that there was some commenting on social media that was, could be interpreted as the opinion of the committee when it was the opinion of an individual.
Well, I think there's potential anytime, anytime one of us comments or a lot of our personal life.
Right.
For example, last week, somebody tagged me by saying, Jim Lebeck was not there. I said, okay, well, thank you for tagging me. I've been, I've, you know.
I didn't, I didn't.
I've read the, all the emails and the communication. I was not there. I could not deliberate. And, and so it was just a matter of fact. I didn't give it a beating one way or another about anything.
You just, an explanation.
But I wanted them to, I wanted to acknowledge that they tagged me. On the one page that I belong to. I've declined the three other indications.
I don't think I'm.
For new, for new pages.
But I mean, that's a little bit different than saying, I wasn't there, but if I was there, I would have said this.
Right. And I purposely avoided doing that because I was not part of that discussion.
Right.
I couldn't deliberate on what was said, or don't know what was said.
The other part is one comment can lead to back and forth where then people are saying, you know, when did Verdrin answer this? Or when did, you know, so hence why I'm not on these pages because I, I don't want to be pulled into something or tagged in something where the, you know.
Yep. Okay, so I just.
I feel like that kind of goes along with the open meeting law by adding the open meeting law.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that certainly becomes a potential issue or issue. Okay, how we operate. That's a long one.
Yeah.
Remember.
Yeah, they cover that. Sorry, you got some other opening.
Well, I think you only need one.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm saying, right?
I think that may be sufficient.
Right, we don't need, it's not already.
Well, it's relative to deliberate, but I don't know if we want it. Maybe deliberating and communicating outside of the meeting.
Is it though?
Deliberating and communicating.
Well, communicating is, I mean, there's, there's reasons why it's okay to communicate. You can communicate for scheduling.
Right.
It's the deliberation about items under your purview that is the problem. That becomes the breach of the open meeting law. And even if only one of you comments, but you're all on the page and read it, then you're essentially delivering.
Can you put deliberating, uh, tonically or?
How about deliberating in any format?
In any format?
Yeah.
Or something to, to make sure that.
In any format.
That actually covers the.
That's a cover note, yeah.
And the other thing is the three minute thing isn't in there.
It is.
Oh, is it?
Oh, is it?
Yep. I saw the ten minute.
Oh, yeah.
Three minutes per person.
You have the end, yeah.
That doesn't, I don't see that.
Now, the ten minutes, they have a three per person.
You're right, so we should add six minutes.
Well, that's what we're sticking to. That's what we should, it should be in there.
Limit per person.
Yeah.
They don't have to talk for three minutes.
Oh, but it's their limit.
Which one is that?
Four.
So Jim, number ten, when you were saying, gee, I, you know, earlier I made a comment that I probably shouldn't, is that what you're talking about? Do you remember what I'm talking about?
When you talked about Abby.
Right, when I talked about my daughter or my child.
Yes.
Now I just talked about my daughter.
But your statement, when we had our meeting and we sat up there last year, I carried that statement with me out of that meeting very strongly. And I think that it's a hundred percent spot on and, you know, tried really hard, you know, not to do that because you're right. It's irrelevant.
I'm not here as a parent.
I'm not, right.
I'm here as a representative.
That's what I'm saying. It's irrelevant.
Right.
The other thing I might, I might, having watched you for a while before we started the workshop, number five. Number six could use a little work.
Yeah, six, I was going to say, I wasn't sure about the all remarks must be directed through the, through the chair. That's not consistent.
Well, that's Robert's rules. That's, and it's, I mean, and it doesn't have to be like super formal. You're a small group. It's just like sort of catching the chair's eye and having the chair decide who speaks next. Rather than, you know, sort of interrupting each other or jumping in without going through the chair. It can, it can help, I think, it can help discussions become a little bit shorter sometimes. If you're, you know, you're hearing what someone else says, so you don't just repeat the comment or repeat maybe a comment that you made. If it's kind of, everybody gets a chance to speak once before anybody speaks again is another, kind of Robert's rule. So it, I mean, it doesn't have to be, sometimes I sit in like city meetings and they're like, through the chair, I would like to ask, so it's, I'm like, come on, do we have to be that formal about it? Can it just be, you know, it's my turn to speak, I'm going to speak. But I think it can help keep the meetings a little bit.
Balanced.
More balanced. It can help, help them move along. And the other thing that I noticed is some side conversations that go on when, you know, someone's talking and a couple of other people are having a side conversation. So you might want to watch that a little bit as well. Or you can say, Dorothy's full of it.
So in terms of the work that you're, you're suggesting that five and six need, do you have any suggestions in terms of content?
No.
No, she just wants us to be aware.
Be aware, oh, okay. I want to, I want to, when you work in practice, not in.
Yes, no, right. Content's fine, it's following the content.
Yes, that's true.
And then lastly, how we will approve.
You see it?
Yes, I just see it.
We shall review and revise operating protocols annually through an annual workshop. You don't leave that though.
We are.
We are, but it's over time though. Annually through a workshop, right?
Yes, yes.
But that doesn't preclude us from going back to revisit at any point.
No, it doesn't.
Right.
Absolutely.
And it makes it better because it's not an annual workshop, it's just a workshop. We can have multiple workshops, of course, over here. Right, participating workshops, do we, do we last?
Yeah, we have several.
Yeah. Right?
Okay. So if you think about all our discussions this evening, any takeaways? Any thoughts about how, what you might want to start or do differently or work on?
Looking at our points here.
I'm thinking of the comment about that we end up doing all this other stuff and that the student achievement gets lost.
Yeah.
You know, I can remember after about my first three months of work, I don't think we talked about anything that goes on during the day. You know, and we just kept getting sidetracked. So maybe that's, you know, something that we need to continue to keep.
Yeah, the focus.
The focus on. I mean, it was stuff that was coming up and.
So I know we had talked at one point about on the agendas to put, you know, our mission statement at the top of the agenda or something that is a reminder of where our focus is.
Want to do that?
Did we talk about that at one point?
Our district mission statement?
No, do we have that?
Our, our, excuse me.
Our mission statement. Mission statement.
Is it the same or is it the same? I thought we had suggested.
No, mission is in the agenda.
No, right?
Well, these, no, this caught me, so I don't.
No, I don't think it usually is either.
I don't know if it's.
Autumn or the end of the agenda?
To remind us that.
I see three, I see committees do, different committees do three different things. One committee doesn't do all three things. Either putting it on the agenda, putting it on the back of your nameplate, so it's right there in front of you.
So that we can see.
Yeah, so that you can see it. Or reading it at the opening of everything.
Like the other statement that I.
Like your other statement. Yeah, yeah.
So let's do that.
Put it on the agenda and read it.
Yeah.
Because I think it's important that we, well, yeah, I think.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Yeah, for us too.
Need to remind them, including us.
Yeah. So we stay on task. Yes. Yes, I'll allow you to speak.
Since one thing everyone, that seemed to resonate with everyone tonight was the focus on student achievement. Could we? Could we have, either for first meeting of the month or at all meetings, some sort of statement, whether it be from each individual school about something? We have school check-ins where we hear what's going on through us as liaisons, but a statement or something from each school or district live.
Who were the superintendent's report? Or the student rep's report? Because the student rep does the student life.
But I'm wondering if it's a little more organized because our student rep does give us more student life stuff, you know, some great things that are happening in each building because I, we do love hearing that and it's just nice to hear about achievement.
Oh, yes, Brian.
Thank you. I was thinking along that line, like it could be whether it's once or twice a month, but like a different department, a different organization, that they could have a representative come in. Like I remember the math department came in and not only, it doesn't have to be about changing the curriculum, but just discussing what they're doing, what their goals are, what they've been working on.
So you might remember that they had the behavioral health advisory council come in and talk about the work that they were doing. I think that if we were to look back at the agendas, we, if we do have them more often than I think you even realize, that it's there. We've got people coming in to present.
We heard of the social studies department. We did, I mean, we heard about athletics.
Field church studies, behavioral health.
Yeah.
I know that you provided things in the superintendent's report as well at times.
The thing about bringing people in is I feel really bad that they sit through a lot of stuff to get to their turn, just to present something that they're engaged in, you know what I mean? And I get it, it's exciting, but I wonder if we can, if we were to do that, we would have to change the agenda so that they could be in before our work session.
I agree. I think definitely putting them at the top and they walk away.
Right, so that they could give us our little...
But that always takes things out of order.
Yeah. It takes things, yeah.
Well, so can I just, just another thought, if you want to make it quick and if you want to make sure you don't get bogged down in discussions. Have a little video.
Have someone like do a little video?
Yeah.
Then they wouldn't have to...
Then they wouldn't have to.
Come to the meeting.
And then you would see, like, and it's good to them in a classroom, right?
You're right.
The only downside is it loses that interaction of asking the question.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, that's true.
But that would be, we could, we could adjust the agenda in a way that makes that, so that we could facilitate that and then get on with our work.
And you think that we'd make the motion to take something out of order?
And we've done that.
Yes, we have.
Yes.
Can we set the agenda so this early, our presentation earlier in the agenda, say after public comment? Your agenda is at the discretion of the chair.
Yeah, and I would think that we could put it in there and limit the time for a present, like we want to limit them, even though they're coming, right? You know, they're giving us a little re-presentation for, say, 10 minutes, then that's it, we work on, then we go to our work.
And you can tell ahead of time, we're just looking for five, 10 minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't want it to turn into something that all of a sudden you're saying, oh my gosh.
Yeah.
Like, you know, half an hour, 45 minutes has gone by and we're not even to our work.
Our real work, yeah.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have to be every meeting.
Right.
Because that would be, then, no, I don't think you can be every meeting.
So I'm thinking that there are times that, as an example, the behavioral health advisory council coming before you was more informational.
Yeah.
Right, like this is who we are, this is what we're working on, this is what we've identified as needed.
Yeah.
There was nothing for all of you to deliberate on and to make decision about, it was purely...
And not national, those are the ones that you want to put at the front, right, front row.
International showcase, showcasing students were...
Yes, where there's something for you to deliberate about.
Right. And that would be more of an action item.
Yes, correct.
Those would be in the body of the, yes, the meeting.
Yeah.
Right. Right, like when they are talking about their foreign trips and we're still deliberating, we're asking questions, it's interactive, more of an interactive, as opposed to a showcase of this is the exciting thing that we did in class.
Okay, anything else?
I think it could even be as small as recognizing somebody who became an Eagle Scout, maybe something small, but showcasing something every meeting or every month.
Right.
Do you want to add that as an item, presentations, after the superintendent's report?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it can be there and sometimes...
And sometimes there'll be no presentation and that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that would be eight before new business would be.
Do we want, maybe do we want to put a date or a share before?
Five.
Share. I'm okay with putting it in.
Before public comment.
Yeah.
Before public comment?
Yeah. I mean, if somebody's just doing a presentation, they definitely not want to sit through. Can you group the 10 minutes?
Well, you know, the other thing is, that means that people there for public comment get to see the presentation.
Right.
Right, so that they're not just coming in for their piece and leaving.
Right.
They're getting some exposure to the other things.
Right.
And if this is something thought of a great happening in the district, that's good for everyone to see and feel how excited that person or group is about what they're presenting.
If they're watching it on TV or online, they get to see it before they tune out.
Okay, anything else?
I just have a feeling that there's more that we can do to improve, I just don't know what we can articulate in for that.
So why don't you make, think about sometime in the winter, just pulling these out again and sort of ranking yourselves on how we're doing. Just, you know, it doesn't have to be only once a year and it doesn't have to be with the idea of...
A tool to use.
You know, it doesn't have to be with the idea of editing them every time, it can just be, you know, we're going to, instead of...
A monitor.
Yeah, exactly. Good work.
It was on his face.
Yeah. I guess I might have said that at the time. Yeah, so it, you know, the check-in doesn't necessarily have to be only once a year, it can be periodic. You can just have a, you know, this, this discussion was half an hour. I mean, the rest of the evening took a lot longer, but to get to that, but it was pretty quick to just go through them. And I think that, you know, I think that you did some good thinking about, are you doing what you said you were doing? Are you doing what you want to be doing? And thinking about sort of re-centering yourselves as you start the school year, about what you want to be working on and seeing and thinking about during the course of the years. Anything else from you? I do have, just for your, the eight characteristics of effective school boards, which is basically, just pass those around. It's from the Center for Public Education, it's sort of a recap of some of those first slides that I showed you, and then the social media for school committee members. Just really quickly, the superintendent evaluation, the rubric that you've been looking at for the past number of years, tomorrow, 15th, DSE is releasing a pilot rubric, which only goes down to the indicator level. Remember the rubric that goes like way into the weeds?
Yeah.
This only goes down to the indicator level with descriptors at the indicator level. So it should be much easier to use, it'll be available. It's a pilot year, so DSE would like any committees that decide to use it to let them know so they can kind of keep track of any feedback. But there's new guidance, new better clarification of guidance about the model for superintendent evaluation, which emphasizes that it is really intended to be a bolder than model, rather than a standard-based, you know, a standard-based model. Kind of, see I kind of laughed when they said that, you know, this new thing, you've been telling people that for five years, but okay, if you want to go ahead and say it's a new idea, that's fine. But so you might just want to keep track of that because I think when you do the superintendent goals and you're looking at what are the elements from the standards or what are the indicators from the standards that we want to use, it'll be much clearer that it'll keeping you more in that governance role and keeping you sort of less in the weeds than some of those elements.
Yeah.
Let you down.
It'll be the weeds, yeah.
Does the MASC...
I don't like the weeds.
Does the MASC have a view on...
I helped develop it. So my view is very positive. Yeah, so I think it's going to be a good change. I think it's, it's going to make the whole process for school committees much easier to do the evaluation, to understand, there's also going to be, it's not going to be ready tomorrow, but a new sort of list of sample evidence so that...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that, you know, not that you have to use the evidence or it's the only evidence there is, but some sample evidence that gives you an idea of, you know, we're not flies on the wall, right? So what are the things that we can look at to understand goal implementation and progress?
Thank you. I stand right back.
I know, really. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's great. Yes, motion to adjourn?
Public comment?
Public comment, sorry, sorry. I was going to say, are we... Oh, we have public comment from the public?
You do.
Mr. Beardmore?
I think you guys had a really good discussion tonight. I was a little disappointed there weren't more check marks here because I frankly think that this was the sole reason for most of the controversy and tough issues that you guys had to address this year. I think it's very related to your overall community engagement and communications policy. And I'm really glad to hear that the superintendent is working with the administration to come up with a policy and a plan to work forward. I would encourage you to seek professional advice. There's a lot of great professional advice when it comes to community engagement and communication. It can be very tailored to the vertical space that you're in, you know, I'm in technology and I use a lot of advice in that space. So I want to encourage you to do that because I think that that could be the measure of success this year, really, is how you engage with the broader community. An earlier meeting this year, I believe it was the meeting when we talked about the sports fees, I made a comment about the cost of free and public education in Lunenburg. And I told you that I was going to keep a log this year of the cost of free and public education to my family. So this will be the first report from the Beardmore family around the cost of free and public education for school year 1920. So these are expense requests, checks written so far, $100 marching band user fee, $15 band camp fee, $50 senior parking pass, $55 student activity fee, $15 class dues, $225 nature's classroom deposit, for a total thus far of $460. School starts in two weeks. This excludes school supplies, haven't been bought yet, it also excludes any non-school department extracurricular activities like Lunenburg Bengals, Lunenburg use soccer, Parks Department basketball, music lessons, college prep, consulting, variety of other things. So a point I'm trying to make here is free and public education, we're going to have a lot of discussions, I think, this year about the burdens of, that the school department puts on the town as a whole and different demographic groups within the town as part of this discussion that we're hopefully going to have in October. The cost to families is not insignificant. I'm putting the over under on my family around $1,200 for this year, so I'll be happy to take action if any of you are interested. But I'm also going to keep you updated because I think it's something that we really need to, we really need to think about, you know, what we're asking the families in this town. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.